Good evening, Winthrop, and welcome to the Winthrop Town Council meeting of August 18th, 2020. Meeting is called for 7:00 PM. This is again a remote meeting where each person is joined into the meeting remotely. Public comment and people that want to speak during the public hearings can also join in the meeting, and they can join in the meeting by calling the following number: Everybody get that? After calling that number, the ID number that you have to put in is 897-5725-3610. I will now call the meeting to order with Councilor DeMarco, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance flag. You have the flag up? Oh, I have one, okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Denise, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilor Jero.
Here.
Council Placot.
Here.
Council DeMarco.
Here.
Council Christopher.
Yeah.
Council Honan.
Here.
Council Farino.
Yeah.
Council LaConti.
Present.
Vice President Littieri.
Yeah.
President Boncory.
Here.
The full house.
Thank you. Has everyone received the minutes of the August 4th, 2020 meeting that were circulated at least Saturday? Has anyone want to make a motion to accept those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion debated by Councilor Tari, seconded by Councilor Farino. Are there any additions? Are there any corrections? Are there any amendments? Here we now let's take a motion to approve the minutes of August 4th, 2020. All those in favor signify by saying aye on the roll call.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Placot.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Council LaConti.
I abstain.
Yes. Vice President Littieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under general information and recommendations, which is the next thing on the agenda, I am going to ask Health Director Meredith Hurley to please give us a report and an update as to what's going on with the town. Meredith, are you there?
Yeah, here I am. Sorry. Hi, everybody. So, wanted to give you some status updates where we're at as Meredith, I believe, sent out today. So, our overall counts are 334 confirmed cases, 24 deceased, currently 19 are isolated, and 291 have recovered. So, today I was able to move six folks from isolated to recovered, which was great. We had two additional cases reported. The thing that I'm going to try and, I'm going to share my screen. So, what I want to talk to you about a little bit tonight is the metrics that the governor and the state of Massachusetts started using last week, this red, yellow, green kind of dashboard board. So, you guys, are you guys able to share in here right now?
Yep. Yes, I can see it.
Okay. So, the metric that is really driving this new dashboard is something that we call the average daily incidence rate per 100,000 over the last 14 days. So, the kind of a multiple. But the way that we calculate it is that we take the number of cases in the 14 days, divided by the population, multiply by 100,000, and then divided by 14 to see what that average was over that 14 days. So, last week, we were in the yellow category and, I'll try and move it forward, so meaning that we were between four and eight cases of average daily incidence rate per 100,000. The per 100,000 kind of makes things a little bit more confusing. So, this is a little bit of a breakdown of what that was. So, we were at 7.6, which is very, very close to that eight mark that would bump us up to the red category. As you can see, the case counts to the left were at 20 over the last 14 days of this period. That period of time would have been July 28th, I believe, it was July 25th to August 8th. What they're going to be releasing tomorrow will be August 1st to August 15th. What I can tell you is in that amount of time, we had 29 cases of COVID reported to me. So...
Is that in 2022 today?
No, they're only going to look at the time period from August 1st to August 15th in what they report tomorrow.
Oh, all right. So, adding the two, okay. So, it's the same as last night's count.
Yep. Exactly, exactly. So, by my calculations, that's going to bump us up into the red, the red zone, which prompted the school committee last night to reevaluate their reopening plan and opted to start school as a fully remote learning opportunity for the public schools based on that and based on kind of this instability of, you know, kind of shifting between yellow, red, and, you know, everybody has to, everybody's anxious and feeling a lot of angst around trying to plan for the schools, the school departments, the families, everybody. So, they kind of felt like they needed to make a decision to move forward in one direction so that people can plan. So, and when I say, you know, it might be coming across that of not being confident, and the reason why I say based on my calculations is because we know that sometimes there's a slight discrepancy in how I count cases and how DPH counts cases. So, if there's been an erroneous report of a case here or a case that hasn't actually been reported to DPH but has been verbally confirmed to me or sent to me by a doctor's office, that's where there's sometimes these slight discrepancies when we're talking about a population that's as small as Winthrop's population and making these larger calculations. A differentiation of one or two can shift us one way or the other. So, that's kind of where we're at right now. Our percent positive rate last week had trended down slightly, just by a smidge. They were calculating it as no change. That's kind of a tougher measurement to monitor on a daily basis because until they release these numbers, I'm unable to know how many people in the town have gotten tested cumulatively, whereas I can monitor the case counts based on the information that DPH gives me every day. So, with that being said, if you guys have any questions, I have any answer.
Meredith? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Please call in order.
Thank you. Thank you again, Meredith, for all the hard work you do. It's incredible, and we are in awe of you over the last several months. Couple of questions. I happen to look back at some of the old ones that I had and deleted on my phone and look back to July 22nd, and, you know, we had 289 cases at that time and 26 isolated. So, the isolated means people that actively have it right now, correct?
Yeah.
And as of today, it's 334 cases, which is an increase of above 45, and only 19 in isolation. So, actually, less people have it today than they did a month ago, roughly.
Yeah.
So, I think that's important. I think that's a good thing. The other thing I went on this, not on the map, the second thing you put up, it had the one line of all the...
Yeah, do you want me to put it back up?
No, you don't have, I mean, you can if you want, but I guess the number I'm interested in, and this is data for the last 14 days, right? This is, not this one that we're getting tomorrow, the previous 14 days.
Yeah.
And it says total test for the day, for that period, 794, and then cumulatively, like 5,300 cases. I guess that 794 number is the number I'm interested. It's only, to me, it only makes sense that the more tests, the more positive, you know, because there's so many asymptomatic that I'm sure if we tested 4,000 people tomorrow and went up, our numbers would go through the roof. So, do you know how many tests there have been, and do you only find that number out when we, when the data gets released tomorrow?
I only find that out when the data gets released on Wednesday, and they've really only started doing that, I want to say, in the last, they've only really started doing it in the last four to five weeks, but they've really only been tabulating it for us since the end of May. So, I have, you know, like, I have it charted out, and I can see a significant increase in July of kind of the testing in mid-July. You know, another point that I wanted to make too is that it'll be interesting to see for the colleges that are going back with housing students on campus, majority are asking them to be tested prior to arriving on campus. So, I wouldn't, it's not out of the realm of possibility that we're going to see this increase because some of the kids have to be tested prior to going on campus and produce their negative results. Some kids are being tested while they're on campus. So, if the family is being tasked to be tested prior to arriving on campus, that test result will be assigned to the community, whereas my understanding is, is if the college or the university does the testing, that'll be like batch reported to their contact tracing and everything else. A lot of confusion around that.
Yeah. So, but I think it's very interesting, the number of cases. I think that's very telling. I mean, if our case count in this past 14 days went up, oh, we went into that red category. But again, the number of tests significantly went up, that's obviously a reasoning for that. You know, especially being a smaller community, the numbers skew quickly. But again, it's based on 100,000.
And to your point also, you know, when we looked at the percent positive rates, you know, back through April, some of our percent positives were in the 12% and 14%, because not as many people were made tested.
Not as many people get it.
Yeah.
But I just think there's some positive news to look at. I think we all obviously have to be extremely cautious in everything we do and maintain a lot of the stuff we've been doing. But I think there's some positive news that we have less people that have COVID now than we did a month ago.
Yeah. And, you know, we saw, we saw, I can't recall directly off the top of my head what, I know that in the first two weeks of kind of the beginning, I want to say, July 29th, there is going to be a bump up. And by I say bump up, it wasn't, we haven't tied it to a cluster outbreak of any sort. I think more people were getting tested. I think that there was cluster outbreaks in other communities that potentially people were exposed to either through their employer or through their socializing. But we haven't been able to tie any cluster outbreaks yet here, which is also, you know, good news. It doesn't take away from the fact that we all still need to be masking and, you know, doing our due diligence with social distancing and, you know, and all of that. And I do think that if we can just continue with one to zero cases reported, if we can get down to, I think the lowest we got for isolation, for residents in isolation was three to four, I would love to be back there. And, you know, we're going to see shifts of four to five people coming off isolation every few days, which will be helpful. So, if we can just kind of keep that trend and keep the case counts low, we'll be going in the right direction.
Meredith, would you explain the age groups of the last 29, because I think that makes a significant difference in what's going on as well, some of this, most of this is coming from people coming back from work with it.
Yeah. So, the majority of people, so in the last 29 days, between the ages of 21 to 50, we have had, actually, I would say 21 to 40 has been the significant, it's been 17 cases. And only four cases have been under the age of 20, which is a lot different than what we were seeing in July. It's really interesting. I'm sure I'll find it a lot more interesting about a year from now to look at these numbers, but I still find it interesting to see how things shift so quickly and the trends shift and kind of, you know, tracking and tracing how it goes. And so, we've had, in the month of August so far, we have had four cases under the age of 20. We've had 17 cases between the ages of 21 to 40, five between 40 and 50, three between 50 and 60, two between 60 and 70, and only one above the age of 71. So, that's kind of, that's where our breakdown is for the age demographic.
President Boncory.
Councilor DeMarco, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Meredith. I remember last time we talked, we talked about the time that we are getting the actual, like, when we get, when we get, hey, you got two new cases today, it might not necessarily, they might be a week old, they might be two weeks old, you might not be getting them at the time of the diagnosis, per se. So, that's why a lot of times, I think you said, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you would get some cases, but they've already been through isolation and they've already cleared, so they didn't go to the active count. One thing that's kind of, so theoretically speaking, and it seems like the governor's map with the red, yellow, and green is based on one metric and one metric only, reported cases, and it doesn't matter, it only matters when we get them. It doesn't matter the day the tests are actually taken, correct?
And that's actually a great point, because when, you know, when I say by my calculations, I do it based on the day that I received the test result. So, because that's just always how I've been doing it from the beginning. So, DPH sometimes will categorize it as the day that, as the day that it was entered into their system, but sometimes it's the day before. Or even more confusing, and I tease this out on a daily basis, if somebody was tested in March, tested negative, but then got retested in August and tested positive, they're actually ultimately reported back in March.
Wow, okay. So, the reason I bring...
But I reported back in August.
Yeah, no, I get that. And the reason I bring that up is theoretically speaking, we could say have 20 new cases reported tomorrow, and if the 19 that are currently isolated, all recovered, and those 20 were past 14 days, we could have zero cases, but yet still jump up to red because of the average case count. Is that correct by the governor's matrix?
Yeah, that is. You know, on the positive side, we are seeing a tightening with the reporting, which is exactly what we needed it to do. So, the struggles that we were having, I think, I have cases that were reported today that were tested on the 13th, and that's the longest stretch that I've seen in the last probably seven days. I had a really nice conversation with East Boston Neighborhood Health Center at the end of last week, and they, you know, they definitely heard the frustration and acknowledged that they were having a hard time, but that there's been, because of their federal funding, they've now been pushed to the top of quest diagnostics list, which is great. So, they're turning them around probably in about three to four days now, which is good.
The only reason I bring up these points is really because I feel like one metric isn't really a clear definition of how a town is doing when it comes with the COVID testing. I mean, we're almost, you know, we're in the map, and apparently, we might be heading into the red tomorrow. We don't know for sure, but it looks like that. And it's almost like, you know, we've cut our active cases in half since July. We have our percentage going down since July. It doesn't seem like a fair assessment of how we're doing, and I just wanted to get your point on that, your opinion on that.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think it's an interesting point about all that we're hinging on this one metric. The way that I kind of perceive this reopening, and which makes it difficult, is that you're moving forward in a direction, but then looking behind you to see how your forward momentum is actually affecting. So, it's only after we move past something that we're able to see what the ramifications are. From an epidemiology standpoint, the incidence rate has been shown to kind of, to convey, shall we say, the prevalence of spread within the community. So, that's why we're using that, and I'm sure that that's why DPH is using and hinging so much on that, and using it only on the 14-day span, because, you know, we know that if it's really high, being intertwined, and then, you know, they can, it can get more complicated from there, but that's kind of why they're using the average daily. So, you know, it gets also with the idea of it being per 100,000. So, when I do my calculations for incidents, I use 18,800, which is what UMass uses, and that's what is also being used in the DPH system. And so, I kind of guesstimate that to say, that's about 20% of like what the 100,000 is. And so, if you take the, if you take the eight, and then you spin it down from there, you know, we're looking at if we, if we're reporting just under two cases a day for over 14 days, that's going to put us in the red. And so, that's a small number. But, you know, that's where, you know, Massachusetts has led the way so much with bringing down the curve, and so, it's bumping us well above where other communities are, which is, I think, why the governor is now using this red, yellow, green metric.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you so much, Meredith.
Did Chrissy, did you have your hand up as well? Okay, anybody else have any questions for Meredith?
Yes, Council President.
Council Jero.
Thank you. So, thank you, Meredith, for everything. Thank you for this presentation. Thank you for all your hard work. Just, so, the original map that Governor Baker put out, that had four cities and towns that were in the red on there originally, correct?
Yep.
Okay, all right. And so, now, we may be joining this group of four cities and towns.
It also increased last week. They added, I believe, Hull, and they added Saugus to it. And another point, you know, geographically, obviously, they seem to be kind of centered around Winthrop. Another interesting point, even though Boston proper has been in the yellow, East Boston is the highest prevalence rate right now in the city of Boston. Also, our neighbor.
Gotcha. And so, you referenced earlier the school committee meeting last night where the schools went to a remote start. Is that a result of us potentially being in the red? I guess, if you could explain to us like what it actually means for us, that we'd be in this red, other than it's like a warning?
Yeah.
That might be helpful to kind of, to understand this a little bit better.
So, it means that, it means that we still have, that we have spread going on in the community, that our rates are high enough based on our population over a certain amount of days. DESI recommendation that Superintendent Howard shared last night was really that if a community is in the red, they need to really be pushing towards remote learning. If you're in the yellow, you have the opportunity to evaluate what's going on in your community. And then, green, what the governor said was, you know, that there's no reason not to be going, at least with a hybrid or some sort of in-person learning. So, and the yellow is four to eight, so that's like kind of a big, a fairly large spread at that point. So, the fact that we're bumping right up to the red right now, which means that we'll be in that for potentially another 14 days, which would lead us into, tomorrow's the 19th, that would lead us into September. And then, right as they're trying to figure, you know, like reopen the schools, do the training, you know, there are other, that was the primary factor, I believe, that really drove the school committee to make the decision that they made last night.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I think those questions were for us on the school committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
But go ahead. If nobody else has any questions for Meredith, I want to thank you, Meredith, so much. You have been a wondican to this town. I mean, the work you've done over the past five months, six months, has been tremendous. I thank you for tracking all of this, for keeping us up to date and accurate, and I value your recommendation as much as anyone in this town. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I think Council Christopher had a question.
Yeah. Meredith, do we have any information about hospitalization rates and how that would compare to other communities, like similarly to the cases? Because that might be more telling if we're talking about whether or not testing is truly representative of where we are as a community. I think hospitalization rates might be a little closer.
Yeah. So, we don't have any solid data on that. It seems inconsistent. So, sometimes when we're, you know, the contact tracing collaborative has been helpful, they've definitely increased their capacity to help local health departments in the tracing. So, part of their reporting system is that they do, they have the ability to input whether or not somebody has been hospitalized. I also track it on my spreadsheets. I overlay them a fair amount of time. It's not something that I feel like is well-tracked. I make note of it kind of on my, but DPH isn't reporting that, so there's always a potential for a discrepancy. That's not reported directly from DPH, though.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you again, Meredith.
No problem.
Moving on, we have a public hearing scheduled this evening, and the public hearing is on the town council's vote to amend section 10.16.90 of the town ordinances, and that motion had gone to lose an ordinance, and I think I'm going to have Council Christopher, while your faces are still up there, please explain what that section was, and so people can call in on this public hearing if they're interested.
Sure. So, the section that the council president just referred to, section 101690 of the town ordinances, is a table of all of the areas in town where you are not permitted to park. So, any place where you're not permitted to park in the town, there should be in our ordinances, a row in that, in that table that says you're not allowed to park here, so many feet from whatever intersection or whatever it is. This particular proposal was for a, an area of George Street closer to the Bowden Street side that was proposed to be, to be a no-parking section of it.
Is there anyone calling in or any of participants calling in to be heard for this public hearing? Again, the number is 312-626-6799 with an ID number of 897-5725-3610. I did receive a personal visit from a young lady that lives across the street from where that sign used to be, asking the secrecy that it be put back. Other than that, I've gotten no comment from any other person in that area. I don't know if any other of you have. Your precinct, I believe, Richard, Council Farino, do you have any input on it?
Yes, Council President. I did attend the TSAC meeting, and it was very much vented, and the issues that I brought up were, A, was it a hindrance to public apparatus fire and police to proceed by that area? And what was the premise of having those signs up, other than the fact that it was for someone's personal convenience to get in and out of their driveway? And I did express that if we allow this to happen, then we're going to open it up to everybody in the town wanting to have that situation happen in their neighborhood or across from their driveway. I know when I grew up trying to get out of my father's driveway, it was, it was a tight squeeze. You had to make several turns and maneuvers to get out. You had to make several turns and maneuvers to get out, but we did it. And yeah, it may have been a little inconvenience, but that's the way the town was designed. It was designed for horse and buggy and paths and, and small boulevards. So, you know, I just expressed, and as I'm doing here, that it's, it's not a hindrance to public safety to get by there. If it was, then naturally, I would say, in the, in, you know, the era of public safety, that we should definitely allow this to happen. But I, I disagree with the reasoning and the recommendation of the president. But so that was one of them. And we did have one participant who was a neighbor that, you know, basically expressed that he was not in favor of that change and to keep it the way it was with no parking there.
All right. Anyone else would like to be heard during hearing? Councilor Terry?
Yes, and I know, Council President, you mentioned a correspondence that you had received. And I did receive a correspondence from a resident on Bowden Street also, who was not in favor of this and very similar to the comments that Councilor Farino just mentioned. And, and I believe this has gone before the TSAC, not even several years ago, maybe three years ago, and it was denied. So I, I also feel, as Councilor Farino feels, this is not a, a public safety issue. This is more of a convenience issue, which, you know, I feel for the residents, as I do for many in this town, because we do have a lot of narrow streets and tough situations to get in and out of. But I did want to mention that correspondence that a neighbor was absolutely opposed to this and, and I am aligning with that.
Anyone else want to be heard on the public hearing, on the vote to amend section 101690 of town ordinances? Hearing none? Hearing none?
Council DeMarco?
Very quickly, same thing. I got correspondence, just like Jim and Rich did, echoing the same sentiments. That's all.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none? All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye during the roll call.
Chris Carroll?
Yes.
Council Flackett?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Freno?
Yes.
Council LaCanti? Vice President LaTerry?
Yes.
President Boncorry?
Yes.
Public hearing is hereby closed. All right, we are now open for public comment. Is there anyone waiting for public comment? I see three cats listed. Is anyone got their hand up or something?
Yes, Kurt Millar.
Very great.
Kurt, if you want to go unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi Kurt, we can hear you. How are you?
I'm doing well. I just want to bring up a point as we're talking like COVID and public safety, safety within the buildings for the town. It's just come to my attention that I've seen posts for the ferry that they're offering that you can, I guess, rent the ferry for two hour increments and you're allowed to bring your own booze on it. And I, I just, from what I'm seeing and other people who have spoken to me about it, the concern is that we're sending kind of a mixed message there where we're keeping town hall closed, library closed, you know, safety concerns, and I get that. But yet we're using town property to kind of host events. I just wanted to see, ensure the liability is covered for it. But I, I just think it sends kind of a mixed message to the people of the town that, you know.
Kurt, I haven't seen that. That's the first I became aware of it. I don't know if any of the other councils are aware of it, but we will look into it with the town manager.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Yes, we have Bill Rice.
Hi, Bill.
Hey, how you doing? Can you guys hear me?
Can hear you well.
I wanted to say thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I just wanted to bring up the point, we've been tracking the performance of the resident sticker program down here in the point. And there's been a large number of complaints and acknowledgements from many of the local residents that they believe that the enforcement of the sticker program is not really up to par. I'm, I'm sure some of you are on Facebook and, and have seen the Point Shirley Connect area and all that. There's a lot of people that are all taking pictures and documenting the fact that there are a lot of infractions. People are calling and the police department to have them come down and investigate, and it's roughly hit and miss. And I, I'm not expecting you guys to take any action on this tonight, but I did want to make the town council aware that it, it is a problem down here as far as enforcement is concerned. We've had a number of residents who have called on numerous occasions, and sometimes the police will send a cruiser down, but most times they won't. And would like to have somebody look into it to find out what's going on.
Thank you, Bill. I don't know how frequently they're down there, but I do know they were enforcing a week ago Saturday, because I saw them on Shirley Street tagging cars from like the 900 block all the way up to the church. So there has been some enforcement. I think the chief is on and he's hearing you.
I can tell you that we have people that live on Townsend in Maryland. They have yet to see a cruiser come down there, even though there's numerous infractions on a daily basis. Coughlin Park, that whole area down by Grandview Avenue is the same way. There's a couple of residents who have called numerous times. Bayview Avenue, there's one resident who's been keeping track almost on a daily basis, four, five, six cars every single day. And she's calling and there's no response. Nobody comes down. So, like I said, I didn't, I don't want to stir the pot here tonight, but I do want you guys to be aware that there is a problem with enforcement.
Thank you, Bill. And I'll let the town manager and chief look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We have two phone-in callers, and I just want to remind, if you're on a phone, you can hit star nine to indicate that you would like to contribute to public comment. I am going to check with one of the callers. I don't know if they have the capacity to do that. Mr. Morgan? Mr. Morgan, did you have any public comment?
John, are you on?
He's on, but he's.
He's muted.
Yeah. Which, okay. I don't think anybody else had public comment at this time.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Hearing none, and we'll be moving on to correspondence. And Denise, I believe you have a bunch of letters. I know you got one from Mr. Dalton, you got one from Kevin Adams. And can you give us an update on the communications?
We do have a couple of letters from Stephen Dalton and Suzanne Leonard. Both are in reference to the library. I'd like to note for the record too, even if someone sends like a longer letter, it may not be read in full, but it is attached to the minutes for the public viewing if they request it.
Yeah.
Stephen writes that he's aware that the public has been running pickup and drop offs since July 22nd. He's aware of who's running this operation. He includes in his letters, he compares Danvis, Beverly, Everett, Swampscott, Paulson, Ashland to the different libraries of how Winthrop's working. He refers to Governor Baker's office of the release of the opening of the guidelines for the local libraries. To recap his entire letter, he's been told for some months that now bringing the library staff back and reopening the library to a decent level of public service is unsafe and unaffordable. These assertions are utterly indefensible, and he would like an answer on those, please. We have Suzanne Leonard, who actually wrote about the successful, safe and well-attended read-in. She thanks Councilotary and Council President Boncorry for being there. Hope you read the transcript right up. She had talked to the town manager about the town manager negotiation with the union and would like to know if there's been any update on that. And that is it for now. And these will both be included in the minutes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. The first committee is Rules and Ordinances Committee, Council Christopher.
Sure. So the Rules and Ordinances Committee met last Thursday and we took up two separate matters. The one that we already held public, a public hearing on was the one about the no parking zone in, on George Street. So at this meeting, we also had a lot of members from TSAC who were in attendance because they, they were there because we were also taking up, formalizing TSAC in our advisory committees in our rules. So a lot of them were there for that matter, and they gave their opinion about that as well. And they had sort of given us some of the history. And I'd like to thank Mike DiLuiseo for really researching this issue and a lot of it. This had been voted on in 2015. It had been voted down by TSAC. And then it was brought up again in 2018 and it passed with a two to one majority. And there was some turnover in members of TSAC. And so we were taking this from 2018 because for some reason it didn't get brought up to the council until just recently. So essentially, the issues that have already been spoken about by Councilor Farino, you know, about setting a precedent with this, was something that was talked about. And it was eventually voted down zero to three by the members of the committee not to recommend that it be put into our ordinances. The other matter that we took up was the, like I said, formalizing TSAC into our rules and also expanding their, their mission a little bit, as I spoke about a little bit last week. But we, essentially what we did was we, we thought about the, what we wanted TSAC to be focusing on a little bit more broadly than it has been now, so that the two groups between the Transportation Advisory Committee and the Transportation, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee could get together on and work together on some, some issues that they both had worked, that they both, they were both within their purview. So the changes that were made, we're still going to keep all of the department heads who currently work on, who currently are members of TSAC. But we're going to expand the public, the citizen element of it. So currently, TSAC only has one member who is from the, from the public. And we're going to expand that to anywhere between seven to nine, seven to nine total members. But we're going to have between three and five members of the public who are going to be able to participate. We also expanded the, their, what they're going to be tasked to do a little bit more broadly to, to include some of the transportation initiatives that the Transportation Advisory Committee had worked on for all these years, since they were first established. So I think that there was consensus among the group that a lot of the initiatives that they had taken could have been handled if they were all in the room at the same time a little bit quicker. And getting that information to us faster is going to make these projects run a little bit more smooth. So I will, that, that's what the committee voted on, and we voted on that unanimously, three to nothing.
Thank you very much, Council Christopher. And we will now move on to the next committee report, which is the Millerfield Committee. I understand they met last, at the same time as the school committee. I hope that doesn't happen in the future. But Councilotary, can you tell us what happened?
We did meet last evening and we apologize for the inconvenience, which made you unable to attend. I do apologize for that. But we are trying to do the best we can at getting things accomplished. So we apologize that we'll try, we will try not to have that happen again. Millerfield did meet last evening. We had several items that we had a lot of discussion on. The first one, just being unfinished areas within the perimeter of Millerfield, including some fencing that should be taking place next week. Some pavement repairs that we have to do. And basically, inside the fieldhouse itself is just putting together some benches and cubbies where the locker room areas will be. We also discussed the tennis courts and parking area. The subcommittee has done an incredible job and has come up with a pretty comprehensive plan in place for various improvements, including sidewalks. I think the net effect on parking would be seven additional spaces, including handicap spaces. It also addresses other safety concerns. They've had excellent conversations with Matt Zarino, who's the athletic director and on the committee, as well as other tennis people, very involved tennis people in the area. We did discuss also lighting at the tennis courts, and there seems to be a consensus as of now that we don't think lighting is something that is needed. We think, obviously, it's a hindrance to the neighborhood, to the residents. And we feel that that's probably not the path we're going to go down. We'll probably keep it without lights. We also had discussion on the golf shed. And we, we did approve money to be allocated to the golf facility. We had excellent presentation from Steve Calla and Rich Safuni, who gave us updates on the situation, as well as Town Manager Austin, who, who made it on the call as well. It looks like, you know, they have to go through some permitting, they have to go through Conservation Committee, and we're hoping to get that done in a timely manner because from the comments from Steve and Rich, you know, they, they definitely have a plan in place and are ready to go. We also discussed signage on Millerfield, including a new Millerfield sign, where we are really going to focus too on the service of Mr. Miller to the community and for our country. And so we discussed the signage. And we also discussed the dedication, which has been an ongoing process, trying to get a date that works for everybody. And, you know, we wanted to center it around some sort of fall activity, and now it, you know, it looks like that might not happen. So, and with the gathering restrictions that are in place, we will have a further update on the actual dedication of the new facility at a later date. And that was it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next committee is the Committee on Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations. And I don't believe anybody from that committee is on, maybe there is. I know John Morgan is on, but he couldn't get his phone to go. If John, if you're still on, try to come in and I'll have you join me in talking about what happened to the Committee on Diversity and Inclusion. We met the other night and all the tasks that needed to be done were done. We had seven of the nine members were in attendance. They elected a chairman, a chairperson, and that would be Andrea Baez, who will be the chairman of that committee. They also elected Father Walter as the secretary of that committee. And Naz Patel, Nazar Patel, as, the three of them have taken the three-year terms. So they have been appointed for the three-year terms. John Bennett, Lydia and Suzanne Martucci have been appointed for the two-year terms. As we know, that committee had to have staggering terms. And the one-year terms are John Morgan, Sid Belgede and Anthony Williams. The committee was very enthusiastic. They seemed very aware of what was going on. They all gave their backgrounds to each other and to the public and whoever had listened in. And I was very impressed by their commitment, and I think they're going to do very good things in the future for the town of Winthrop. John, are you on? John Morgan?
He's on, but it seems like he can't unmute his phone.
Okay. Can you tell him the right way to do it?
Mr. Morgan, do you want to try hitting star six?
There he is. Hi, let's see if that works. Hey, here I am. Living in color.
Welcome to the party.
I, I was just telling them, I'm sure you could hear, about the diversity committee and, and he is the only member of the committee that I know is online. Do you have any comments about what happened the other night?
I was very excited about, about everyone talking about themselves, and I'm looking forward to hearing more of their experiences and hopefully passing on some of my experiences. So our committee can, can work in the best possible way.
John is on the committee and he's representing the disabled people in the town. And we're very proud to have you on, John. And thank you for making. And we're very proud to have you on, John. I thank you for making the commitment.
Oh, thank you, and it's I'm looking forward to to doing my my at best for the committee.
Thank you. All right, is anyone else on the uh call from the diversity committee? If not, we'll move over to the memorials committee. The memorials committee, Rose, is Rose Mazakala on?
Fortunately, Rose is not available.
Council President, I was at that committee if you'd like a report.
Okay, yes. I know the report because I have the motion, but.
The memorials committee did meet last week and in an extremely timely manner and and I thank them personally for that. Um there was numerous people on the call, um numerous accolades for Coach Tricilo. They did have a discussion on the motion that was presented uh forwarded to them by the Town Council and they did unanimously, they did unanimously pass that and um has their support to go ahead for our for us to make a vote this evening.
Yes, I do have a motion to make a vote on, uh a new motion that came in uh just now from the memorials committee and uh we'll be taking that up under whole business. Okay. All right, any other committees prepared to report? Public safety, um I we got a call in from uh Governor Spock again. So they're ready to uh begin conversations again. Uh so I would request that we have a public safety meeting set up in the near future.
Yes, we will set up a meeting and go over their parameters that they have sent into us. So that we can figure out what we have to do to move forward.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Right, um Council Flock, I'm sorry. Um how about any other committees? Joint Committee? You see, okay. We'll move on to Town Managers' Report. Town Managers' Report, please.
Hi, thank you. Um first off, I'm gonna hit on um a couple of things from the earlier conversation with Meredith. Um you know, Meredith's been doing a great job. Um and I agree with um Councilor DeMarco concerning the um one metric to uh compare all communities. It's it's super difficult to come up with one, the per one thou- hundred thousand cases is just kind of become like a national standard type of thing, doesn't make it right or wrong. Um just one of those things that we can compare communities to one another. Um you know, I I agree with Meredith that I think um we are hopefully heading in the right direction. Um I just wanna give some caution though, um w- before we kind of pat ourselves on the back or anything. Um the governor called me last Monday before he uh presented this material to the public on Tuesday. Um he was very clear that the state is knowledgeable of what is happening in Winthrop and why cases are happening in Winthrop, not just community, not just spread from going outside of the community or people at their jobs. Um we know that, you know, people are having events with too many people, people may not be wearing masks. Um these things are going around town and even the governor knows it. Um and he brought up specific dates and times that I am aware of where people were not wearing masks in public. So I just wanna be clear with everyone that the governor is paying attention to Winthrop because we are not in a good place right now. Um unfortunately, we are in the yellow right now. We will most likely be in the red very soon. Last week, when the report initially came out, the communities in the red, as initially reported, were Revere, Lynn, Everett and Chelsea. It is very hard to live in Winthrop and not interact with people from those communities. It is difficult to get any normal amenities within Winthrop without interacting with those communities. So this is not something that is just within the borders of Winthrop. Meredith brought up East Boston is the hotspot of the city of Boston. We need to continue to treat this seriously. There is no real way that we should be kind of even looking towards any like light at the end of the tunnel with this type of stuff because we are unfortunately in the midst of it right now. We changed our school plans specifically because of this. This is very serious and it's not going away. And I ju- I just need to continue to stress, places like Medford are coming on tomorrow, Salem is on. Like we, a lot of communities in this area are trending closer to this yellow and red area, unfortunately. And we are a region, we are not an island that can provide for ourselves, unfortunately. So we need to just be cognizant of our own safety and that comes with the social distancing, wearing masks, not having larger events, y- you know, like the the things that we have been preaching for this entire time. And I've kind of been harping on the point for a while, but six to eight weeks of wearing masks all the time, our numbers would probably be good enough that we could send our kids to school. But unfortunately, we haven't necessarily committed to things like that and um we continue to have ta- we continue to test this way in Winthrop. So, you know, I'm not trying to be doom and gloom, but we are not unfortunately in a good place. We are in the yellow and almost in the red because we are not in the right place in this state right now. Compared to the rest of the country, sure, we are doing better. But within the state of Massachusetts, we still have some work to do. So I just wanted to make sure I was clear about that. The governor is willing to provide us resources. And when I talk about resources, it's um increased testing. Meredith has been talking with East Boston Neighborhood Health about having a testing site within Winthrop. Um there may be a deployment of a drive-through testing site in Winthrop. Um Senator Moncorry is working on that with the governor's office. Um so testing is one part of it. And the reason why testing is important is uh isn't necessarily about like just figuring out what our total case numbers are. It's figuring out the individuals that have it so that we can treat them differently with how we interact with them. If we can't segregate ourselves from the people that have the disease and or the virus and prevent other people from getting it, we're not doing things correctly. So until there's a vaccine, testing is super important and testing to the frequency of, I would love to have Town Hall staff tested on a weekly basis. I would like to know who's coming into Town Hall, who works for the town, who has the virus. It would be very good for us to know that. Unfortunately, we're not at that point yet. I can't wait till we are, but we, I mean, we need to know these types of things. So testing is not just a thing, it's super important and it's the only way that we can manage ourselves within this public health emergency and get any sense of grasp on it. Because I've said this before, nothing else matters until we deal with this virus. We can't talk about schools or the economy or going anything back to normal until the virus is under control. Because every day, myself, Meredith, my chiefs, Public Health Director, Public Works Director, we just have to take COVID into account with every single decision that we make. So I just need to really, really hone in on the fact that we are not remotely past this. We are in a unfortunately precarious position and we need to try to trend in the correct direction as much as possible. And with that comes mask wearing and really doing the simple guidelines that have been in place for a long time. So just wanted to make sure that we're very clear on that. Um a second item, um the G O S O, the contractor for the Center Business District, just requested um to continue work um a little bit later into the season and uh my office is gonna take that under advisement um and speak with the Council President and um try to figure out if that's gonna be something feasible um to work into the month of December. Um moving along, um there was a bike study that we did with an outside engineer, uh traffic engineer. Um I finally got the results of the bike study back and those have been passed along to um Public Works Director Steve Calla. Um we are going to be um deploying the share row markings on the streets with uh it's a little bike with two arrows around it um on a uh basically path of least resistance bike network through town. Um it connects a fair amount of the town and misses some of like the crash trouble spots in town. Um so we're excited to deploy that. Um on top of that, um I wa- had a conversation with uh the group that is trying to extend the greenway into Winthrop last week. And there's some exciting ideas there. Um it's it's tricky and expensive, but it seems like something really cool that um we can we can find about, find out a way to participate in hopefully. Um and then in addition to that, um Revere is interested in working with Winthrop um in uh potential regional climate energy office or energy and environment office um to connect the greenway both through Winthrop and then through Revere as well. So um cool things on the bike front coming. Um you know, we unfortunately never have enough money to put towards it to get the blue bikes or um invest in a real bike lane right away. But um we're trying to take incremental steps um towards kind of these multimodal end goals. Um beyond that, um we got money from the state, from uh the Shared Streets Grant Program. We got a hundred five thousand dollars um that we are gonna be utilizing for parklets. Um those are the um kind of like wooden metal structures that you put in one or two parking spaces. Um they usually have a table or two with them, um some plants and things like that. But um trying to utilize some of the space um in town in a different way. Um it was very clear when we were doing and exploring outdoor seating um that there was a limitation on the outdoor seating available and the spaces for outdoor seating available in the Center Business District. So it could be a pretty cool location. Um we're just going through the procurement process with that right now. But um we're really excited to bring those types of things to town because um it helps us kind of come along um and meet with some of uh the base community development efforts that are happening around the region. Um lastly, concerning the library, uh we're gonna be engaging with the library union in the near future. Um I believe we'll try to sit down with them in September. Um I've been working with the library director and the assistant town manager um concerning our uh what we're gonna do for the staffing. Um our original plans, we're gonna maybe take them in a different direction in terms of um our how we're gonna manage the staffing levels within the library. Um and we're trying to kind of get to a point where we think we can make the community happy. So um you know, promises for the date when we're reopening, but we are working hard on uh that goal and re-engaging with the union. Um that said, a lot of people have been asking me um some finance related questions about the library and Anna's on right now. And I just wanted to have her um give a quick rundown because I've I, you know, I've seen some things on social media um and they've brought to my attention and they've uh uh I want to make sure that people are fully informed um about um some of these issues.
Thanks, Austin. Uh so this is just a really quick um budget primer that we hope will be responsive to some questions that we've seen that people have had about funding for the library and also funding for some other departments and sort of what happens once the budget is approved and the what ability um town administration has with moving money around between departments. Um so we had mentioned, I believe, at an earlier meeting this summer that um there are no plans to use any of the, any potential savings that are being realized from employees that are no longer on payroll at the library to be used for any other department. Uh during the budget process, we took a um, we ensured that our funding levels at the library for personnel remained consistent with what was recommended in the town manager's original budget. This was done purposefully, so to the extent that we need to um maintain, in order for us to maintain ultimate flexibility, to bring folks back on should we need to furlough or lay off, which is what ultimately occurred. Those funds, there are no plans for us to use those funds with any other department. And moreover, we cannot, on the town manager side of things, we cannot take that money and appropriate that money to any other department without approval of the town council. And we are aware that the town council does not have appetite to move those funds, nor do we recommend that we move those funds in any way. So those funds will remain at the library. We want to maintain that funding level going into FY twenty-two. So I just wanted to reiterate that um any any funds that would be, any any savings that would result as a um due to the um the temporary separation with some staff, those those funds are not going anywhere else in the town's budget. And that just for anyone else that has questions about other departments, about moving money between one department to another, just to again reiterate, once the town council votes on our budget for that year, we cannot take money from one department and move it to another department without the town council approving that. It would be done through a public, public process and the town council would vote on that. Uh we take great care during the budget process many months to ensure that we are funding our departments at appropriate levels and our, the finance committee and they review that with us. So the only time that we'd ever be moving money between departments is at year end and that is a whole process that involves our, the town council needing to review all of those transfers. And so um just to clear that up, if anyone has questions about that, we cannot take money from one department and move it to another department. Town council has to vote on that.
Thank you, Anna. Um and you know, lastly with the library, um I I've asked for patience before and I guess I would continue to ask for patience. Um we're not delaying this decision, we're not dragging our feet with it, we're trying to keep people safe. And I've talked about Town Hall. Town Hall is still not open um to all of our employees and we're not close to being open to the public. Same thing with, I mean, you look at our schools being remote only now. I I just want people to realize that we are doing the pickup and drop off, we are increasing our digital materials and we're trying to figure out some of the virtual learning stuff. Um we aren't doing our best, we're trying to keep up with what other communities are doing. But again, this is a public health emergency and I, that's the priority. If we, it can't be a community center right now. It can't be what it was for a period of time, unfortunately, because of the circumstances. Um we we can't have people using the same computers and things like that. It it's just not gonna be that for a period of time. So we're we're gonna work with the union and figure out a palatable way for um everyone to um have a type of plan to come back. Um again, the public, the the library director has been working very hard during this entire time um on multiple things within her department, but right now she is focused on um what she will be doing when we kind of ramp things up and uh bring employees back. So again, the the public health is the priority and I just hope that I I'll I'll keep repeating it and I may sound like I'm beating a dead horse, but um that's been the priority, it will continue to be the priority. Um and as our public health director talked about earlier tonight, unfortunately, we're not necessarily in the right place um to be considering some of these uh rolling back um type of measures that other communities can engage in right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does any uh counselor have a question for the town manager? I can't see you. Who is it?
Mr. President, it's Rob.
Yes, it's the DeMarco.
Uh Austin, I I get two unrelated questions. Um the first one is in regards to the library, is your plan um to bring every employee back that was laid off? Or is?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And uh number two, as far as the Center Business uh redevelopment is concerned, is that project running on time as far as you can tell?
Uh I think it, I, Director Calla would be better for that. He's actually on here. Um I think we're maybe running a a little bit behind, um but not super far behind schedule. Steve, if you want to unmute yourself and answer that, um I don't know that answer off the top of my head, the exact answer.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I see. I got the end of, end of the question. It's pertaining to the schedule of the CBD project?
Yeah, we are we on schedule essentially.
Um we're still on, uh uh our plan is to still finish all the utility work this calendar year. Uh they've asked to um to extend uh the work into the first week of December, the last week of November to the first week of de- uh of uh December. Um the the original schedule had them um offsite by the beginning of November, so yeah, they're approximately a month and a half behind um on the utility work. Uh I I'm confident that the the, you know, they could, they could wrap up the utility work this year if granted the permission to continue. Uh otherwise, they would have to finish some drainage work in the spring. We're not terribly far behind. We're still on schedule for the for the total project uh to be done with everything uh at the end of the second construction season being uh two thousand twenty-one. So uh yes, currently about a a month, month and a half behind, but in the overall scope of things, we're we're really not that far out.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Austin.
Any other questions for Town Manager?
Peter has his hand up.
Peter, I I can't see you. Go ahead, Peter.
So um so I I understand what you guys are saying about the funding for the library and we made it clear, I think, as a council, that we have no appetite for moving or transferring those funds. But even if we were to open up the library, eh, you know, tomorrow, there would be a recognized savings if we were to just run everything the same way throughout the rest of the year. And I guess my question is, is have you thought about ways that we could deploy that savings due to the closure of the library to sort of jumpstart things uh as far as making sure that the library is safe and towards new um virtual programming and things like that? I guess my question is, what what is the plan for that recognized savings or if we, do we have one yet?
No, you can go ahead.
Sorry, I was unmuted. Um so I would, I would recommend extreme caution in terms of making plans for those savings. We are in uncharted territory in terms We are in uncharted territory in terms of understanding the impact of COVID-19 on our revenues for this year. We, we'll be, I'll be presenting in, I believe, late September, early October to the council on our free cash for FY20, which will show that we had a drastic fall off in the final, in the last quarter of FY20 for our revenues. We're only, I only have July revenue so far for FY21, but it is extremely concerning if that trend continues. Obviously, things are a little bit more up and running right now than they were in the spring. So I hope that the revenues don't look as terrible as they did at the end of FY20. So I would urge caution to assume that those savings are, are, represent some sort of surplus because those savings might just mean that the budget is imbalanced at the end of the year or we don't have to withdraw from our rainy day fund to close out the fiscal year. So I think we would need to wait and see, get through a first quarter or two and see how our revenues look. To the extent that we can determine that those savings represent a true surplus, then I think maybe then a conversation could occur about how that may be able to be reinvested in the library. In terms of getting the library resources in order to set up social distancing or other sort of safety requirements, we have CARES Act money that I, that we set aside to set up the library to make those, make that retrofitting occur. So I believe we have substantial resources available to accommodate things like epoxy glass, hand sanitizer, those types of things. We've got plenty of resources to accommodate that.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Councilor Christopher?
Yes.
Does anyone else have a question?
Yes, Council President.
Jerry, I can see your hand.
Thank you. Just as, as you know, Austin, a majority of us counselors sign off onto a letter saying that we wouldn't be in favor of touching that money or moving it out of the library budget. But also in that letter, we requested more creative ways to expand library services during this time. And you had mentioned just now that we'd be looking into digital services moving forward. And also, I think at the library trustee meeting last Thursday, I was able to listen in on that, but there were some creative ideas being thrown around there. Could you just share those with the council here and whoever else is listening?
Sure. So initially, first off, the pickup and drop-off, that's, that's a big, people want materials out of the library. Why, why, so then you go to the digital materials. We are trying very hard for all of our students in the community to have a Chromebook so that they can interact with these digital materials. That's been one of our biggest priorities. The superintendent also worked very hard to ensure that all the students in the community have internet available in their residences. And if anyone on this has any issues with it, Comcast Internet Essentials are offering severely, significantly discounted services and even free months initially for people that need internet services or have been impacted by COVID. So even Comcast, who beats me up all the time with my own internet bill, is offering cheaper things. So we do have some resources available in the community. In terms of virtual programming, there, there's a couple of different ideas that we're trying to talk about with that. And the library director is a librarian, and we've talked to her about kind of like, what advice would she give us about what type of virtual programming could we provide? And one of the ideas that we've been kind of talking about, and I think we may try to pull together pretty soon, is doing some like children's relong type of things.
I think it's still on.
Oh, Denise, you're still talking with your, good one. Ah, sorry about that. Good, thank you, Denise, for breaking the tension. So we're gonna try to have some of the more famous faces in town do some different types of relongs. We thought both the Chiefs would be good ideas, probably Meredith, because everyone has seen her a lot lately and she's a face that's out there. Maybe some of you counselors, but trying to get some more materials out there and easy-to-do things, reading Cat in Hat and that type of stuff. And then when we bring those employees back, we're gonna have them help with some of that stuff too. Unfortunately, right now, I talked about this at the library trustees' meeting. This isn't a department that we, that has the same type of resources that other departments do in terms of technology assigned to individual employees. They don't have laptops to be able to do their, the same work that they do in the workplace at home and things like that. So the virtual programming, to ask union employees to do that at home on their personal computer, I don't necessarily totally feel great about doing that. And it kind of works outside of some of the rules of how they do work. So we are trying to pursue how to provide the same types of services that other communities are. One of the gentlemen, who, Mr. Dalton, who wrote in an email, wrote, and he wrote a letter covering a lot of communities that are providing services. He even mentioned my community of Holliston. And what Holliston is doing is pick up and drop off, increase digital items and virtual programming. So the same type of stuff that we're trying to do here with the limited staff that we have is being done in other communities. And it's, you know, I can't wait until we ramp it up some more. It should be, like I said, it should be in the relatively near future. And we'll get this stuff cooking again and we'll figure out what type of programming they can provide in the safe environment that we can provide for them.
Anyone else have any questions?
Council President.
Can't see you. Council Terry.
Thank you. And thank you, Austin, for addressing this. I had asked for this to be a new business, but we don't need to go over it again. But I do just want to reiterate with, basically, I think all the counselors feel that it's an incredibly important resource, especially during a pandemic. People that don't have the ability to access a lot of these materials should have. And I, I, I think it would be great for us as counselors, I think there's a passion there from all of us to do the best we can, as I think is with you and the assistant town manager. I would like to see at our next meeting, though, to have maybe the library director or some sort of representation from the library so we could ask more questions that might be out of your warehouse or in, as, and just get some more ideas of what some other communities might be doing and what things, you know, hopefully in the near future or in the future that we can do to, to, to provide as best a level of service that we can. So I would ask at our next meeting that we have a representative from the library on the meeting with us.
Sure, Diane can come. I would point people to, there was a recent article in the Boston Globe concerning what libraries are doing and how there's a lot of inconsistency. And there was an article in WGBH about two weeks ago concerning what a lot of libraries are doing as well. And, you know, like it's, everyone's kind of struggling with the same types of things. Libraries are community centers right now, and we can't bring communities together in community centers. So what does that then mean they are and how do we provide the services? So just trying to answer those questions and do the best that we can.
Thank you, Austin.
Thanks, Phil.
Moving on to school committee report. Last night was school committee meeting and was quite an intense meeting. Lasted quite some time. We had a very thorough report from our superintendent, Lisa Howard. She did an outstanding job giving us quite a detailed report. And the reason for the detailed report, of course, as you all know, is because of the metric that our governor came out with. Governor Charlie Baker specifically mentioned Winthrop on television and at least two occasions last week. And Winthrop ended up being mentioned in both major newspapers last week due to COVID. And the situation with this new metric, and as Rob put out, it is one metric, but it is a metric that four people in 100,000 have it, and you're in the green. If eight people in 100,000 have it, you're in the red level. Unfortunately, Winthrop with only 18,800 members, according to the last census that they use, and doesn't even count to one-fifth of that 100,000. So one person a day puts us over the 4%. One person puts us over the 4 number. Two people put us over the 8 number. It's simple mathematics that if we don't get it down to a zero in Winthrop by protecting everybody in Winthrop and keeping people socially distancing and keeping people away from large groups and people away from community gatherings and people away from not wearing their masks, then we're going to be in the red for the rest of the year. It, I can't say it enough to bolster what Meredith has said and what Austin has said because I worry about it. You know, I got sick last week. I thought I might have COVID. I got nervous. My wife and I ran and got tested. Why? Because I stayed awake for two nights worrying that if I did have COVID, who did I give it to? Did I give it to any of my 15 grandchildren? Or to any of my nine children? Or to any of you? Or to any of the people that I socialize with, you know, on a, on a daily basis? It was nerve-wracking. Thank God, it was only a gallbladder attack, which was tough enough, but it wasn't COVID. It was a negative test. Both times we took them. And in thinking of that, when I came into the school committee meeting the other night and I listened to Lisa's report about the red and I listened to Meredith and she gave us those statistics, and she gave us the statistics about 29 people getting it so far in just this month. You know, that's more than one a day because when she gave the report, it was only halfway through the month. We're gonna be in that red for a while. And then the demographics of the people that had it. More than half were in the age group of the parents that we would be putting their kids back into school. So I made a motion not to do it, even though we didn't really have a choice because if we are at an eight, we are mandated by the COVID-19 Command Center, DESE, to be remote. We don't have a choice to go hybrid unless we are below eight. And between four and eight. And I, I don't think anybody would suggest going to hybrid if we were at seven or at six, or at least five to go to hybrid. So we voted last night to make school return remote this year with the town of Winter. Today, I got, I saw a lot of comments about people saying that we did the right thing. And I'm sure we did the right thing, but I saw comments about people saying we did the right thing. Then I also got a few calls about people saying that we did the wrong thing. And I, you know, I will never believe that we did the wrong thing when we voted to protect the safety of the children of the town of Winter. And that's the school committee's job. It's my job as CEO to worry and protect about every citizen in Winter. So I implore you to please use common sense. We've been pretty good, but we've not been great. And we need to be great. We need to wear those masks, we need to socially distance, we need to stay apart because people's lives depend on it. And our kids will not get back to school until we get down. And to get down is going to take a big effort by everyone in the town and especially by this age group of the 30s to 50s. Those are your children. Be safe. That age group is the age group that I see out socializing and at restaurants at night. Be safe. If the socializing stops, kids can get back to school. But it's got to be you that stops it. It can't be me or anyone on this TV screen right now that's going to stop it by themselves. It has to be the people in the town of Winthrop to use common sense. Hey, that's all we have to say about the school department. Although there were 1,900 kids that, during the school, they got back about 1,000 answers to their survey and about 800 of the people wanted to go back hybrid and about 235 didn't want to go back hybrid at all, but wanted to go back remote. But the choice was made for us by the governor, by Department of DPH, by the COVID-19 Command Center, and by DESE. So please, let's prove to those people that Winthrop can do it and get us down below four so we can open school fully. Thank you. That's the school department update. Anybody have any questions?
President Bunkory.
Go ahead.
So thank you for listening to me over the last couple of days. I know I've, I've shared my thoughts on the school reopening with you several times. And I know we disagreed on a couple of things, but I appreciate you listening to me. I guess, I guess where I'm coming from is I've always thought that the reopening of schools, that we should do what's best for the kids. And everybody's been reading the reports that the CDC, the Academy of Pediatrics, you know, multiple studies have said that the risk of the kids not going back to school is actually greater than them going back to school. So I've always thought that putting the kids first, the most important thing was to get them back in school. Two weeks ago, Lisa Howard, who's worked her, she's worked so incredibly hard, they came, and the school committee unanimously passed the hybrid model. Now, one of the great things about the hybrid model was that it had built into it a fallback plan for if we were to go into red or if it was to become untenable for us to go back to school. So we could get into September, and September 10th comes along and we say, you know what, we're not there, we can't go into the class. Let's push it back two weeks and go remote learning. My disappointment here is that I feel it was more administrative. We have 78% of the people want, were, were ready to go back to the hybrid model. We had 30, 40 teachers who weren't ready to go back. How do we make it all work? So my fear is it's not just the numbers driving it and the kids need to go back. Everybody agrees with that, the kids need to go back. But my disappointment lies with the fact that we did not stay the course with the hybrid model because we had that ability to go in to the remote option. It was already built in. And we, in my opinion, deserve to give the kids that chance that we tried. But I think in the end, I think a lot of that vote was, you know what? This is too hard to figure out. It's bloody easier if we just go remote. And that is not putting the kids first, and that is where my pain lies. And I just wanted to express that. And I appreciate everything Lisa's done and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me, President Bunkory.
Yes, and I think that you're absolutely wrong and everybody on that board's decision was made by what was best for the children and not what was best for the administration because the administration is going back to work. They're going to be in their classrooms and they're going to be teaching from their classrooms. The decision was made, and even though you try to believe everything you read, the governor put it out, this is the law. If you got greater than eight, you're remote.
Which would have kicked in with the hybrid plan. That would have kicked in in September.
I'm not, I'm not in a debate with you, Councilor.
I'm not debating you, President Bunkory. I'm just, that, that, and I'm, there were a lot of parents last night who were up crying and couldn't sleep. And I had members of my family. It's emotional for us. We don't know what we're going to do.
It's emotional for everybody that had to make the decision. Everybody that had to make the decision, it was very emotional. And I want to point out that this will be revisited on, I think it's November 13th is the day. And on November 13th, hopefully we're down somewhere below four. But if we've been down in the poor five range, there's a possibility we could go back. But until everybody takes care and starts really protecting themselves from getting it, we're not going to get out of this red. Okay, anyone else have any questions on the school committee? The school department report?
Phil, just one thing quickly.
Yes.
So it, you know, you made a lot of good points there. I just want to back up Lisa on this. This is, there's no good decisions here. And I, I, I just, you know, I ask for patience for myself. And, you know, I just ask for people to have some compassion and some empathy for the people who have to make some of these decisions because this is really hard. It's, you know, it, if a kid gets sick in one of our schools because we have them come back, we have that on our hands. This potential kind of year of remote learning, we have that on our hands too. The hybrid, you know, people intermixing with different cohorts and groups and pods and things like that, there are no good decisions now. And that, that's when, like I'm, it, it's coming from the heart when I talk about this stuff that we just don't want people to get sick. And just like you, Rob, my daughter has autoimmune things.
And we're considering what we're doing with school this fall. Her school, um, did it just based, her, our school district did it just based off on age cohorts and transmission rates, which I, I don't know if that makes any more sense than the way we're doing it, unfortunately. Um, but it's just one of those things I, unfortunately for Lisa, people are gonna be upset no matter what decision she made. And I just, I hope the community realizes that there, there was not a great, best decision here. It's the best of the limited options that we have, unfortunately. So the school committee and Lisa, I mean, I give Lisa all the credit in the world. She's been working very hard on this for over a month, if not more than that. And I, I just hope people know that um, she did not take this decision lightly. And she didn't take her initial plan lightly either, to suggest the hybrid. So um, just wanna try to back this up, that this is, this is a very difficult decision to make.
And Lisa was outstanding, and has done an outstanding job. And, you know, I'm very proud of her. But she made a recommendation. The committee made the decision. And it, it's done. And it had to be done because we're over eight as of tomorrow. It had to be done. People needed time to prepare. All right, moving on, um, all business. The first item under all business is that the town council discussed the name the Field House at Miller Field after Anthony Fusillo. And as I said before, I received, well, we sent a motion there that was put together by Councilor Terry to the Memorials Committee. And this has come back from the chairman of the Memorials Committee dated eight thirteen twenty. And it says, uh, motion by Mary Lou Usborne to make recommendation to the town council to name the Miller Field Field House after Anthony Fusillo. Was seconded by Judy Bono in the Memorials Committee, and it was passed unanimously. So um, there was a motion, I believe, before us. Uh, and it had originally came from Town Councilor Jim Lutteary to name the Miller Field Field House after Coach Anthony Fusillo. Uh, is there a second on that motion? Second. I think it had already been made and seconded before it was sent. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Yes, Council President.
It's Council Juro.
Thank you. Um, I'm honored to support this motion tonight, uh, to name the Miller, the Field House at Miller Field after Coach Anthony Fusillo. Um, I just wanted to speak as a former student of his and uh, firsthand to how he was such a positive influence and a mentor, not only to the student athletes on the field, but to every student that came through Winter High School. Both on and off the field, Mr. Fusillo improved the high school experience of every student. He led his classes and his teams with the utmost professionalism, integrity, and dedication. Mr. Fusillo championed the Viking pride spirit and fostered an impeccable culture of inclusivity, again, both on and off the field. And he made, uh, me and many of my classmates very proud to be a Winter Viking. Um, not only are Mr. Fusillo and I both Winter Vikings, but we're also both Tufts University jumbos. As many of us know, Mr. Fusillo's coaching career did not end after retiring from Winter High School, as he then took an assistant coaching job at Tufts University, where he's an active member on that campus and in that community there as well. Mr. Fusillo's dedication to student athlete development is no different at Tufts, where he's respected by all. And during my time at Tufts, it was great to have a familiar face on the campus. And I'm thrilled that Coach Fusillo is continuing to make an impact as a mentor and an educator on the collegiate level. He is a great representative of the town of Winter, and he deserves this honor, and I'm excited to vote for it tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else who's to be heard? If not, we'll put it to a vote. We'll take a poll call vote. All those in favor of naming the uh, Miller Field House after Anthony Fusillo, please say yes when your name is called.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Flockart.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Council LaConte.
Yes.
Vice President Lutteary.
Yes.
President Boncorry.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item of business is the T-SAC Committee Discussion. And I believe there's a motion coming out of Rules and Ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Um, so like I said, um, during the committee reports, we met. Um, and the amended motion that came out of committee um, was as follows. Within Rule Nine, Section A of the Town Council's Rules and Procedures, to strike text in Section F in its authority and add in its place the following: Transportation Safety Advisory Committee, T-SAC. This committee shall be a seven to nine-member committee made up of the directors or the designees from the Police Department, Fire Department, Department of Public Works, the Parking Department, and between three to five members of the community. This committee will respond to citizen and town-initiated traffic safety or transportation improvement requests, which require a public process. The scope of work for this committee entails, but is not limited to, improving the safety, quality, and accessibility of multimodal transportation options, supporting modal shifts to decrease congestion, and issues relating to a traff, to traffic safety requests. The committee will make advisory opinions to the town manager and town council. The committee may receive and take up requests regarding an advisory opinion at the request of any member of the town council or the town manager.
Okay, that came out of committee, so it doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to add this section of a, a T-SAC committee and the makeup of that committee? Is there any discussion? There being none then? All those in favor, please say aye on the roll call.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Flockart.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Council LaConte.
Yes.
Vice President Lutteary.
Yes.
President Boncorry.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And I believe we have one other item. And that is the um, council's vote to amend Section ten sixteen ninety of the town ordinances. And again, that came out of Rules and Ordinance, where I believe a negative recommendation. Is that correct?
Yes, the committee did, uh, voted not to recommend this uh, motion. Uh, the motion reads that the town council accept the recommendation of the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee to reinstate a previously posted no parking zone on George Street that was removed due to lack of accompanying ordinance by amending Section ten sixteen ninety of the town ordinances to insert the following into the table of streets where parking is prohibited. Name of street: George Street, side: north. Location is from a point sixty-four feet westerly of the intersection of Bowden Street to a point one hundred feet westerly of the intersection of Bowden Street. Uh, and like I said, this motion was um, not recommended by the uh, Committee on Rules and Ordinances.
Okay, so the motion before us is still to amend it? Or is the motion now coming out of committee? You're reg, you're making a recommendation on that motion that we do not vote for?
Yes, our recommendation is to not accept the count, uh, this motion. So an aye vote on this would be to um, accept our recommendation, which is not to pass it. I know that that's a little confusing, but um, so a yes vote would be to not add this to the um, to our Rules and Ordinances vote. Okay, so yes is no.
To accept your recommendation and not add it.
Yes.
Everybody understand that? Does everybody have any questions on it?
Council President?
Yes.
If, do we need to vote on this? If we don't vote on this, doesn't it just, the signs come, stays down?
It's on the agenda. Um,
I understand that, but if we're not, we're not actually amending anything, so if we do not.
I, I mean, people.
I mean, I have no problem voting. I'm just wondering procedural wise.
We vote against the recommendation of the, of the Rules and Ordinances Committee. And you know, I don't know what Council Farino thinks. This is again, in his precinct. And if he's having input in it from the people that I had from both sides over there. Uh, so I, I think we should take a vote on it. I think we should, but I think we should really take a vote on the motion proposed.
Correct.
And then, and I think that would be the proper Roberts Rules way to do it. Motion is to amend it. So I think what you should do is if you don't want to amend it, put the sign back up.
No.
And if you want to go along with the recommendation of the committee, vote no. Because the motion before us was to amend, and that's what was the committee. Okay.
So now no is no.
No is no, yes. That is the correct way to do it, I believe, according to Roberts Rules. So all those in favor of the motion, vote aye. If you're in favor of the recommendation, vote no.
Council President, just procedurally, so it did not come out of committee with positive recommendation, so we do need a second on it, which.
But it came out with a negative recommendation.
Right.
But the motion was made and seconded and sent to the committee.
Okay, I just wanna make sure procedurally we're okay.
We did. The motion was made, seconded, and sent to the committee. Okay, is everybody ready to vote?
So Council President, a no vote keeps the signs down? A yes vote, okay, gotcha. Just making sure.
Councilor Jero.
No.
Council Flockart.
No.
Council DeMarco.
No.
Council Christopher.
No.
Council Honan.
No.
Council Farino.
No.
Council LaConte.
No.
Vice President Lutteary.
No.
President Boncorry.
Yes. Motion is defeated. Okay, next issue of business is uh, new business. And uh, under new business, we have a motion of, by the town manager. And the motion is to adopt bond premium authorization language. All right, and I'm gonna read the motion. It was made by the town manager, so it will need a second. Okay, uh, and the motion is that the Winter Town Council adopt the following order. Order that to the extent such language is not already included in each loan order, authorizing a borrowing that was passed by the town council prior to the date hereof, hereby amended to provide that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes pursuant to such loan order, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of insurance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of project costs approved by the loan order in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter forty, Section twenty, thereby reducing the amount of authorization to be borrowed to pay such project costs by a like amount. Okay, Anna Freeman, do you wanna speak on this? I believe this.
Sure, thank you, Council President. So this motion was recommended to us by our bond counsel and our financial advisors. The language that's referenced in this motion is typically included uh, when the council votes on bond authorization. But they are recommending that the council take action to do this blanket authorization for this language in case any of our previous authorizations do not include it. Uh, this language is highly beneficial for the council to approve because it allows for, if we receive a premium when we go out um, to do a bond issue, which is sort of, is the sort of value above what the face value of the bond would be. Um, so it's additional money that we would, this allows us under statute, uh, I believe it's Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, that we can then take that additional amount of money we received and apply it to the project costs, which then reduce the cost for the town. Um, and so this would just make sure that any authorization the council has already voted on in the, um, in past, um, that this would allow us to apply any premium received to reduce the cost of the project. Typically, um, we use the bond premium if we receive one to help pay for like the issuance cost of the, um, of the bond. So the paperwork and the legalities we need to go through to do that, um, which is also provided for in that same statute. And this is just to make sure we also have this flexibility as well in case it happens to be missing in any of our bond authorization. At one point to note, this does not impact any future authorization. So um, this would be just any authorization that's already been approved that it would allow uh, for this, um, for this action to occur. And happy to answer any questions anyone has on this. Uh, one thing I should note, um, our bond counsel has, um, issued, gave me the opinion that, um, he does not believe that this needs to be um, um, referred to finance. And I can, happy to sort of read just his rationale for that, so that that's clear for folks. Um, uh, he believes that it may be passed by a majority vote of the council because it does not, and because it does not involve a new appropriation or a new loan authorization, or an increase in an existing appropriation or a loan authorization, uh, that our bond counsel believes that can be passed through all of its stages at one council meeting, as long as no member of the council objects. Uh, it does not require publication and does not require referral to the finance committee for recommendation. Um, one uh, point uh, to note on that, um, if the council um, proceeds and approves this motion tonight, that would be highly beneficial to us, um, because we are likely doing a bond issue in uh, September, uh, early this fall. And so to the extent that this is relevant for the language that the council had approved for that, um, uh, which is under authorization that the council granted last spring, um, that we would wanna make sure we have this flexibility to reduce any payments, uh, should we have the opportunity to do so.
Okay, the motion's coming out of Town Manager's office. It needs at least a second by the council.
Second, Council President.
We'll make a motion made by uh, Council Terry, seconded by Council DeMarco. I think this motion has to go to Finance Committee. And I am going to send it to the Finance Committee, where it controls finances. It doesn't seem to be an emergency. We'll be meeting the very close week of September. Uh, and if there is a need uh, for anything that has to be done, because it becomes an emergency, we can always call an emergency meeting. But I am gonna send it to Finance. All right, we, we have another motion coming out of the Town Manager's office. And it's a motion in accordance with the charter of the town of Winter, and moved that the town council vote to amend its June sixteenth, twenty twenty vote approving the town manager's proposed annual general fund budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one by increasing the amount to be raised and appropriated by six hundred thousand, oh, by six hundred million. No, six hundred thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifteen cents from fifty-three million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine, eighty-five to fifty-three million, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty-five, and reducing the appropriation of seven hundred and fifty thousand from the General Stabilization Fund, Fund nine thirty-two, by six hundred thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifteen cents to hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and four dollars and eighty-five cents, or take any other action relative to it. I would like a motion to send this to the Finance Committee. Do I have a motion to send this?
Motion to refer to Finance.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Council Terry, seconded by Council Farino. Uh, I will send this to Finance. I don't think we need a vote. I think I can just do that. Okay, I don't know if there's any other issues to come before. All right, that's all the same. All right, I think um, the library discussion is the next thing on there. And uh, I think you said you wanted to take that off. I think we've talked about it enough.
Well, I think, no, I'm, I'm content with the discussion that was had. Um, I do just again wish to state now that I wish to have some representation from the library at our next scheduled meeting, whatever that might be.
Yeah, okay. We can, we will invite someone from the library to our next meeting. It would be good to hear from the head of our library. Okay, and uh, anyone else wants to speak on the library? I think we uh, overdid that issue right now. Uh, next thing is appointments. And I am, uh, I have one reappointment. And that reappointment is to a policymaking body, and that is. And that reappointment is to a policymaking body, and that is to, uh, the Conservation Committee. And the motion is that, uh, the coun- council accept the reappointment made by Council President Boncory to appoint Stephen Mackinsky to the Conservation Committee for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Stephen's been on the committee for quite some time, and, uh, he's interested in going back, and I am, I'm proud to appoint him. So, uh, Council, uh, Leteri, here you go.
Thank you. There's a motion on the table from Council Boncory for an appointment. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Council Farino. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, take a roll call vote, please Denise.
Council Reggero.
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DiMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Frino?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Vice President Leteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
My motion has been passed. Council President, here's your gavel back.
Thank you. Okay, uh, final issue under new business is, uh, whether or not we should move our election, um, election night meeting.
Council President.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend council rules and, um, change the meeting schedule for September to the second and fourth Tuesday, which would be the eighth and the twenty-second, I believe.
Second.
Okay, a motion been made, uh, to move to the second and fourth Tuesday, since we have that many Tuesdays in, uh, this coming month. Is there any discussion on the issue?
Uh, Vice President Leteri, why not just, uh, you know, it seems like, why not just do the next day and, or the day before? Why do we have to move it a whole week out and not meet for three weeks?
I think my, my, uh, reasoning for that is that, you know, it's pretty historical that we have meetings. I try to keep meetings on Tuesday. There are other meetings already booked on Wednesday. And like, I know Council President does not like to be in two places at once. So we're trying to keep the meetings relatively consistent, and I think other groups in town understand that and schedule their meetings accordingly. And that we do have five Tuesdays, I think, in September this month, so I think it would work out okay.
The trouble is, I think the school committee meets the second and fourth. So I mean, I.
Monday, but they meet on a Monday.
Meet on Mondays.
Also keeping in mind what Anna, uh, what Anna just talked about, we moved that, um, you know, now it's three weeks instead of two weeks before we meet. So we might have to have an emergency motion if it comes to that.
We could very well potentially have to have a quick meeting, uh, to discuss that uh, issue brought forward by the CFO. And, uh, um, I will talk with her and I will have a subcommittee on finance earlier rather than later, just to make sure we're prepared for that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those favors say aye, uh, when they call your name in the roll.
Council Reggero.
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DiMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Frino?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Vice President Leteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
No, motion passes.
We know Council President does not like to break the rules.
He will not break the rules.
I will not vote to break the rules. I will. Okay, for, we are now open for public comment. Again, public comment number is three one two six two six, six seven nine nine. The ID number is eight nine seven, five seven two five, three six one zero. I see we've already lost ten participants. Hopefully, uh, we don't lose any more. Let's have a public comment period, please. I see eight chats as well.
Yep, we have some folks put their hands up, and I just want to remind the people that are on their phone. If they hit star nine, it will signify that they would like to raise their hand as well. Um, up first for public comment, we have Steve Dalton.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Steve, how you doing?
Hi, I'm doing well. Thank you for staying so late on the call. I know that this is a drain on everybody's resources at the end of the, the day. Um, thank you all for your time. I've got a few things to say about, I bet you're not surprised about this, the library. It will take just a couple of minutes. I respectfully request that I be allowed to speak uninterrupted. I'm going to refer to the data that Meredith cited earlier about recent COVID cases. Um, first, some high incidence towns. In the past two weeks, that most recent data she referred to, Brockton is yellow at six point nine cases per one hundred thousand residents. Everett is red at eleven point two. Malden is yellow at five point two. Saugus is red at nine. The Brockton Public Library, that's the first one I mentioned, has fully reopened to the public with in-person patronage. And all of the other libraries in the other towns have their entire staff working. Many other towns with lower rates have also reopened. Ashland is green at two point two. Holliston, green at three point one. Milford, green at three point two. Natick, green at one point six. Walpole and Wellesley, green at one point seven. All of these libraries not only have their staff back, but have actually fully reopened to the public. Meanwhile, Winthrop has seven point six cases per one hundred thousand residents in the past two weeks. And yet, the only staff allowed in the building are the director and assistant director. Now, earlier in this meeting, Mr. Faison stated that the governor called him directly to discuss his concern over winter being in the yellow. To be sure, we appreciate and share the governor's concern for our town. But if the governor's office is to be used as a bellwether for when to do things, let's go with that. On June eighth, Phase Two reopening guidelines were published by the Baker Administration. Phase Three reopening guidelines were published on July sixth. Both sets of guidelines contain simple checklists to follow for in-person service at libraries. The June eighth guidelines even explain that they are intended to provide guidance, quote, "as libraries transition from curbside pickup only to browsing and other transactions with restrictions." That was on June eighth. The Winter Public Library did not even begin pickup and drop-off service until late July. And even then, it was only after numerous people complained in a public meeting about the town's tardiness in this matter. Now, to the issue of safety, I know that safety is w- well and truly and rightly so, the first and foremost concern on everybody's minds. It should be, and it should always be. Publicly available data lists the square footage of the Winter Public Library Museum as just over nineteen thousand square feet. The guidelines I referred to earlier, the Phase Three guidelines on July sixth, from the Baker Administration specify that libraries are permitted to have eight persons in their building per one thousand total square feet. There, there actually is a specific entry for libraries that, uh, has that number, eight people per one thousand square feet. Now, we have been repeatedly told that the town will bring the staff back when it is safe to do so. But think about it, if each one thousand square feet allows for eight people, nineteen thousand square feet would allow for no fewer than one hundred and fifty-two people to be present in the building and still abide by those safety guidelines. Yet, we are supposed to believe that it's only safe to have two people in the building. What we're asking for is ten. But we're supposed to believe that even ten is unsafe. A fully staffed library is safe, even though it's one fifteenth of the allowed occupancy limits, according to the Baker Administration. Now, the people of the town look forward to in-person patronage as soon as possible. But as far as bringing the staff back to the library, it was safe to bring the full staff back then, and it is safe to bring the full staff back now. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stephen. Is there anyone else on, uh, public comment? I let him go an extra couple of minutes. Uh, he was on for five minutes. Everybody's only entitled for three. So please keep your comments to three minutes. Okay, but Stephen had also written a two-page letter, which we all got. Public comment.
Michaela Dalton?
Hi, yes, um, thank you. Can you, can you hear me right? Thank you, everybody, for your service to the town. I really appreciate it. I appreciate the focus on safety. Um, I remember earlier in this meeting, uh, our town manager was speaking about our infection rate with the virus, and he said, within the state of Massachusetts, we are not doing well. That's always sobering news, and my family has been particularly strong on safety in this matter. We distance, we mask, we isolate. I have not been to a friend's house since March, and I've had no friends in my house since then. We do not go to restaurants. We're trying to support the town with takeout. Um, so I, I appreciate the safety factor. Um, but I would also argue that within the state of Massachusetts, as regarding our library services, we are not doing well. And I know that I may differ from the town manager in this because he was talking about pickup and drop-off. Um, and it is true that we do have pickup and drop-off, but I want to get a little bit into the nitty-gritty to talk to you about how, um, the, what is actually a lack of services of the town is negatively affecting us. Um, so if I may use Everett as one example, and the counselors may remember, I, I called into a previous meeting and I had done some research about surrounding towns and their pickup and drop-off. And shortly after that meeting, we did get some pickup and drop-off. I've done the same thing with services in libraries around the state of Massachusetts um, to find out precisely what services they are offering. And I'll use Everett as an example, but I want to be clear that the types of services I'm talking about are being offered across the board, from rich towns and poor towns and in-between, towns that are white, green, yellow, and red on the map. So Everett, for example, I spoke to the, uh, library director, and I spoke to the mayor's office as well. Um, they fully support the full employment of their staff. Um, the adult librarian at Everett is hosting book club groups, uh, virtually, of course. The young adult librarian is setting up paint night packages as we speak. Um, the children's librarian had an author, um, a children's author on a live Zoom call, which they livestreamed on Facebook and recorded. And people on Facebook sent in questions for the author, which the Zoom host librarian then shared. It was very successful. They've outsourced some things to other vendors, other authors who were happy to help the library in return for the library buying a couple of their books.
Okay, we hate to cut you short, but as you said, we have a three-minute time limit. And unfortunately, we're on a computer like this, we can see the time right in front of us as to when someone's standing.
Shall I wrap up?
Please, uh, if you can.
Let me wrap up. Um, so in other words, when we're talking about the, uh, extremes of service, we are talking about things like extended hours. Holliston, for example, is ten to six, four days a week, ten to eight, one, ten to one on Sunday. We are talking about delivery for vulnerable residents. We are talking about, um, book clubs and livestreamed events and educational packages and a whole range of things. There were plans for this. If you look at the June trustee minutes for a summer reading program, we got a grant. Diane was planning to set it. It hasn't occurred, and I believe it's because although as hard as the director and assistant director are working, they need the support of a full staff to actually achieve these things in a timely fashion. We are asking patience, but the time is done. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Michaela. And, um, Larissa, are you, are you getting these calls in?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Are you getting the calls in?
There is a, a caller that's waiting to speak as well, if, if that's what you mean.
Remind them the three minutes before this.
Um, there's somebody on the phone with their last four digits of their phone number, two, three, zero, nine.
Sure.
If you hit star six, it will unmute your phone and you can speak.
Oh, it's strong. Hello.
This is, hi. This is, hi. Daddy Genoprio.
How you doing?
Wow.
You're going to get the phone away from the TV.
Okay.
Come back to her.
My, I'd like to change the subject if I may. I'd first like to tell you that Carla held a wonderful Zoom meeting on Monday going over the entire process of voting.
Your TV. It was too much static back. It's like, uh, too loud. You have to get away from the TV.
I'm, I'm in the other room, dear.
Okay, now you're okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to share with you, Carla went through the entire training manual. And that was very extensive and very informative, and I think the town clerk, Carla, along with her team, is more than prepared to work with our state voting. I believe the early voting is going to be starting on August twenty-second at the town hobby hearing room. And I would ask if the folks that have volunteered their time and energy and effort are taken under consideration as far as safety around the room in the voting areas and outside in all of the precincts. I have one afterthought I'd like to share with you to a lot of the younger people who did not seem to take this killer virus seriously because it was intended for the all seniors. And now we've come to realize middle-aged, teenagers, even young children are being affected and in some cases are dying. I think your school committee did a remarkable job in caring caring for the children, caring for the teachers, and caring for all of those involved that have families back at home.
Thank you, Daddy. I think they did too. Thank you. Any, anyone else?
Oh, yes, we have Suzanne Leonard.
Yes, uh, hello, everyone. Thank you so much.
Hi Suzanne, how are you?
I'm, thank you. I, um, I will be brief. Um, I'm sure you know what I'm calling about.
I know.
I actually wanted to just.
We had ten minutes on the library between the tailors.
I agreed, agreed. Um, but I actually wanted to make a point, um, that I think brings together two strands of the conversation. This evening, uh, both the library and the school, um, to underscore and make notice something that I think is, um, information we would, uh, do well to remember, which is that because of these layoffs, uh, we lost Ellen Mickerson, who was a longtime veteran of the library. She was our children's librarian. Um, so now, uh, Winthrop is in a situation where we have only remote schooling, and we have no children's librarian. Uh, so I just want to let that sit with you. Um, and, and say that I think because of the lack of stewardship of the library in current months, uh, we are now facing an even harder situation, um, for everyone in the town. Particularly, I'll be honest, and I count myself among, um, these people, uh, working parents, um, right? So, uh, the fact that we no longer have a children's librarian, that that librarian, as I understand it, um, because of a loss due to the layoffs, uh, leaves us in a more, uh, more precarious position. So I just want to second, um, what Council Leteri asked, which is an update, um, from the library, uh, at the next council meeting. And I'd also ask you to really take into consideration, um, not that this is only about children, um, but certainly children's programming is more than essential right now, given the decision from last night. Um, and so I would just underscore, um, the need, uh, to really think seriously about what has been lost for the townspeople and for the children, uh, for the children of this town who are also going to be lacking in-person, uh, schooling services for obviously, um, health-related reasons. So I just think that's another, um, just another notable point to add to this already very rich conversation about all that has been lost by the lack of library services in this town in the past three months.
Thank you, Suzanne. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Gina Pasetta.
Hello?
Hi.
Hello?
Yes, hello?
Oh, hi. Good evening, town manager Faison.
Oh, hey Gina, how are you?
Good, thank you, and members of the town council. I know it's been a while since you've heard from anyone on the airport hazards committee, but I know that there was a recent article in the transcript, and I just wanted to make mention of it this evening at your meeting, seeing as though sometimes your meeting has a far greater reach than our Winthrop Airport Hazards Committee meeting reaches. But there was some significant progress made on the federal level with help from Congresswoman Clark's office, as well as our stint officials, Speaker DeLeo, as well as Senator Boncory. And the Winthrop Airport Hazards Committee is having a meeting tomorrow evening to discuss if any members of the public may have any questions regarding this T-Hub appropriations bill that was passed by the House and is now sitting in the Senate. We want to welcome members of the community to attend our meeting tomorrow evening via Zoom at 6:00 PM, where we will make ourselves available for any questions anyone in the community may have. So with that being said.
I want to thank you and your committee and Cherry Falbo and the work they've done pushing, of course, our state senator and pushing him to push Catherine Clark. We actually finally have got a decision that's gone in our favor. And when Massport gets some money, they are going to be obligated to fix some houses. And it's, it's a great piece of news. Gina, I appreciate the work that you all have done on that.
Thank you very much. It's our pleasure, and we're happy, we're happy to at least get some progress. It's not everything we wanted, but baby steps.
Baby steps. It's a piece. I just hope, unfortunately, with what's going on with the airline industry and in Massport, I don't know how much money they've been making over the past six months. So, you know, it may be a long wait, but at least it's in stone.
And the, what's, what's ultimately important is that the language has been accepted by the FAA, which is an unbelievable feat in and of itself.
Yes.
So with that being said, also, we still have two open spots on our committee, and we just want to encourage members of the community to please participate, join our committee. And.
I did appoint one person. I hope they got involved. It was Kathy Capuccio.
Okay, I haven't, I haven't heard that, but I know that Lori and Faith also had submitted an application with the committee's recommendation, and I'm not sure if that passed or not.
I believe it did, and Denise can correct if I'm wrong, but I think I did add both of them.
Okay, so it would be Kathleen and Lori have been officially appointed?
Yeah. And you still have, you still have one more, I believe. And I'm looking for the right person. If you find someone, you let me know.
I will do so. Thank you very much for all of your time this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Elizabeth Alessi.
Elizabeth.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, hi. Thank you, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm calling in in support of the library. I know that you've heard from many of us, and we keep hammering our support for the library over and over again. But I think, as you can tell from the previous callers and from all of the letters you've received, that those of us who support library services have done quite a bit of research in terms of what other communities in the area have been doing in terms of reopening their libraries. We come well armed in terms of, you know, what what else is out there. And I think it only drives home the point that Winthrop is woefully behind and has been woefully behind in terms of library services. And I really do hope that that changes. We have much love for the library. Both of my children were at the library for storytime within the first week of their births. So we very much miss it. And if I, I know that there's, there's certainly so much more we could be doing in terms of virtual programming. But I would also just like to note that right now the library is only available or is only open for pickup and drop-off services from eleven to two, four days a week. And this is really not adequate for those of us who are, in fact, working parents or just working in general. It's the middle of the workday. I I am actually going back into the office now, and when I'm not, I take calls for work. It's, it's not easy for many of us to pick up and leave in the middle of the day. I would, I have requested books from the library. In fact, I've had to reschedule now already three times for a pickup slot because of the fact that I work. So those, I, I, I just think there's money there to bring staff back. The staff wants to be back. We're woefully behind where everyone else is. And and we really, you know, to echo with the decision to have remote school in the fall, I mean, parents are only going to need the library even more than we already do and and then we already miss it. And it's just, I know you want us to be patient, but it's very frustrating to be told again and again that there's a plan, but no one sees the plan and there's no progress on the plan.
I think the town manager said that he will have something in September going. I, I thank you, but you see, the council really is not involved in the actual day-to-day operation of any of the.
And I understand that, but we only got pick-up and drop-off because so many of us hammered here in this forum that we had nothing, and then pick-up and drop-off happened. And I know, Mr. Faison, you're shaking your head, but to those of us from this perspective, nothing happened until we hammered on it. So you're going to keep hearing from us until something happens.
And he has been hearing from members of the council as well. Okay, is there any other caller on?
Uh, yes, Wendy Malapage.
Hey, Wendy.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Wendy, how you doing?
I know it's very late, and I just really want to talk about COVID real quick. First of all, I watched the entire school committee last night. Know the anxiety. I don't have a child in the game, but I have people that work in the school system, and I've stayed connected with the drama department, and I'm one of the drama parents. And I know how devastating this is for many people. However, I have questions from the things in our, in our messaging that we're putting out on a regular basis. My first question is, what happened to a mask mandate? And now that we have our green, yellow, and red, when we enter a red zone, like we most likely will do tomorrow afternoon, is there a way to possibly look at? I know, Rob, you're not going to appreciate this, but look at a mask mandate. If you leave your home, Everett has done it, Revere has done it, and people are getting fined if they are seen in the street outside of their vehicle not wearing a mask. That's one thing that I would like for the council, the Board of Health, for all of you guys to consider as a person who's had COVID and now been told by their doctor that my three-month immunity is gone and I can possibly catch it again. I'm really big on mask-wearing. I'm really big on the social distancing, and I'm just hoping that people will start to take this a little more seriously. And I'd like the council to consider talking about a mask mandate with enforcement. And I know that's harsh, but we've got to do something so that things can get back to some kind of normal.
Wendy, because that's happened, I have to get together with the Board of Health. The Board of Health had a meeting tonight at the same time we were having our meeting, and I don't know why they did that. So we could not hear what they have done yet. And, you know, that can be done on an emergency basis between myself and the Board of Health with the Board of Council. So I want to thank you, you know, for being so active and interested. I know you were on, uh, last night, you were on tonight, and I know you were on for the diversity and inclusion meeting. What did you think of that one quickly?
I'm very impressed. I just have one recommendation, in all honesty. As we start to set policies and procedures for that committee, I really do have a official recommendation for having a representative from the police department, as well as someone from either the school department or the school committee, to be actively involved. And it'll help set up programming from kindergarten through senior year. If we have someone from the school committee and with the police department, as laws were brought before them, that would be potentially an illegal activity, then the police step in.
I will attempt to get someone from the school administration and someone from the police department administration to attend their meetings.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Oops, I'm sorry. Sorry, Wendy, I touched you.
I had a question.
Anyone else?
I can bring her back. I'm sorry, Wendy. Uh, yes, there's Amanda.
Hello, Amanda?
Hi, sorry, just had to unmute. Um, so I'm just calling as more of a wife, to be honest. I do not live in your town, and I apologize, but my husband has lived and worked in your town for respectively thirty-three years and twenty years.
But did someone give her permission to speak in their place?
My husband's right here. He can speak for me if you need that to be done. Because I have asked numerous times, I've reached out to numerous council people. I'm sorry, that's not true. I've reached out to one person. I have two foster children now. I don't have time to call, but I can have my husband speak for me if that's necessary.
President Boncory, I would make a motion to suspend the rules and allow her to speak.
Thank you. Go forward, go ahead.
Thank you. I apologize, I wasn't aware that was a thing. I would have addressed that earlier, and I do apologize. So my two couple of big things is it's hard to live with someone and not listen in on every single union meeting that they have. And so, you know, things happen, things have been said that I know of, and whatever. But the fact that these people have put in so much effort into putting in a plan that the town manager has had since the end of June, early July, and not been seen by the town council until I posted it in the Facebook group, is really, really discouraging. There is a wonderful plan. There are so many things these people can be doing. I strongly urge you, as someone that he will have to, when his contract is up, report to. You guys have this power. Please, please, bring back these people. That's all I can ask. I won't take any more of your time. I really appreciate it. And Rob, I apologize for not getting back to you. I had a second foster daughter come this weekend, so I have been out straight. So thank you all for your time.
No worries, Amanda. Reach out anytime.
Anyone else?
No, nobody has their hands up. Just a reminder to the callers that if the phone call listeners, if you want to hit star nine, that indicates that you do have public comment. And my apologies to Wendy. I, instead of lowering your hand, I hit disable talking.
Do we have any on chat? I see there are quite a few chats. Are any of them comments or questions?
Karen Chavas has her hand up.
Okay.
Go ahead, Karen.
Hi Karen. I don't want you to think I wasn't listening, because I have been listening. I've listened to it all. I, I, I have strong feelings about the schools on both sides. I really think that the kids needed to get back to school, but I understand where Alicia was coming from. I agree with Rob, maybe it could have been put on hold until September and go back to the original hybrid. And then if it didn't work out, then go to the all-remote learning. As far as the library is concerned, that's a touchy-touchy subject, and I don't know what the solution is there. I'm sorry that the hours to be picked up are only eleven to two. I'm wondering if one of those two people, either the director or assistant director, can maybe do some evening hours for drop-off and pick-up. It might work out, you know, one or two nights a week. The other alternative to not wearing a mask, and I hate wearing the mask. I have severe COPD, and when I wear the mask, you know, I sometimes get very short of breath. But I still wear the mask, no matter what. The other alternative to not wearing the mask is, you know, maybe the governor's going to say, listen, you people, close down your restaurants. Close down everything you've opened, and let's, you know, start from scratch like we were in March and April. I don't want to go back to that. So please, you know, do something with the mask. I did listen to What Happened for a While tonight. They are sending something to you, Mr. President, about a mask mandate, which I believe is very, very important. And please, please, wear your masks.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Anyone else?
Nobody else with their hands raised for a public comment?
Hello?
There's nobody else for a public comment, Council President.
Great. Hearing no one else, we will now close public comment. And public relations is the issue that is now before us. And we want to announce that early voting will be taking place in Town Hall Hobby Room, in the hearing room, on August twenty-second, twenty-twenty, through August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty. That voting will be available every day of the week. Saturday, Sunday, Monday, it'll be ten to two. Tuesdays and Thursdays, the voting will be available from three to seven. And on Wednesdays and Fridays, voting will be available from ten AM to two PM. So, I mean, Town Hall will be there, and it will be open on Saturdays and Sunday to vote on those days. Okay, any other public comments?
House President?
Yes.
Just like to ask Council Clerk Quist to set up a finance Zoom committee meeting for Monday, August thirty-first, at 6:00 PM, to discuss the two items that were brought to us tonight.
Will do.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Anyone else want to set up a meeting? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Vice President Leteri, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Farino. Are all those, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes when your name is called.
Councilor Gero?
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher? Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Council LaConte?
Yes.
Vice President Leteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
The motion has passed. Everyone, please stay safe. Please, Winthrop, use common sense. Let's get out of this red and into the green. Please, wear your mask, social distance, wash your hands, stay in small groups. No groups of ten to twelve people, no backyard parties with neighbors. Families only. Please, let's bring this down from a red to a green, please. Thank you, and good night, everyone.